Good evening and welcome to the, oh, the HVAC went off. Welcome to the Wednesday, November 12th meeting of the Town of Somers Planning Board. It's Wednesday, November 12th, 2025. I'd ask for everybody, please stand for pledge.
Good flag of the United States of America. To the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I should get it straightened. Okay, thanks, Lord.
Nicole, can you call the role, please? Chair Vicki Gannon?
Here.
Paul Chivardini?
Here.
Jack Mattis?
Here.
Bruce Prince?
Here.
Anthony Sutton?
Here.
Christopher Zabirdo?
Here.
Thank you. The first item for consideration of the draft minutes of October 8th, 2025. We did have one correction that council suggested. I printed it up, but I haven't got it with me. It was part of the discussion about the-
Training course.
Training courses, yes.
It was just an errant "and."
Exactly, and additional was on the last page. So are there any other comments or questions about the draft minutes? If not, then I move we approve the minutes as amended. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda tonight, project review of Heritage Hills 202 Center patio. This is a site plan application, tax map 17.11-10-20. The applicant is seeking approval to modify the existing patio area at the Heritage 202 Shopping Center. The property is located at 249 Route 202 and is in a neighborhood shopping NS zoning district. So Dave, do you want to start with a planning note?
Well, is the applicant here?
Here.
Maybe perhaps just have the applicant start and then we can follow up. Just but just by way of background, the applicant has coordinated with with the building department and with the planning office on their application. And so this is a suggested approach, given the fairly de minimis improvements that they're requesting. So Nicole, why don't you go through the-
Hi, and if you could just, behind the podium, the microphone, we just need to make sure that everybody can hear you for the record. And if you need to point, there's a pointer hanging down from the-
Gotcha, thank you. Hi, everybody, I am Nicole, I work with Studio Architecture. We are here on behalf of the Property Owners Regency Center. Tonight, what we'd like to present to you is kind of like a beautification of the existing patio area that is in front of the Heritage Hills Shopping Center. They have a pretty wide patio, pretty deep patio area that currently is just unkept landscape and really wide sidewalks for no real reason. There's a fair amount of tenants in here that do serve food and like Bobos currently already has outside seating. So our plan is to kind of expand on that and make some nicer paved patio areas rather than just concrete sidewalk all over the place to encourage the patrons of the shopping center to hang out for a little while, sit, enjoy their food, enjoy Somers and to help the tenants at the shopping center with, you know, the seating issues that they currently have.
Okay, thank you, Nicole. So procedurally, the, what the applicant has requested is relief from the typical site plan requirements other than providing, Steve, this issue with respect to stormwater and stormwater management. This, this application is comparable, if you recall, to the issue that Baldwin Place had with the, if you remember, they had the speed humps on the Ring Road that services that facility. And they came in, there was an issue there and Bureau of Fire Prevention reviewed it. They did not have an issue with the design and the amendments to that site plan were essentially very de minimis. But it was important to at least reflect or to get those improvements on paper and to have them recorded for the town and also for the building department. So I think that's, that's their main request is that those specific or the site plan requirements for a much more robust improvement program development be waived along with the, with the public hearing. This is a, falls under the type of action classification for seeker so that what, that there's no environmental assessment form that's required essentially. There's no adverse impact as a result of the proposed action. So at this time, I would ask Steve if he could just kind of review for the board, you know, his comments and how the applicant's responding to any drainage issues or stormwater management issues.
Sure, hi Nicole. We had a, could you describe for the board of the two areas where the improvements are being made? What is on the ground now?
Sure, so I do have an existing plan that I can flip over to just to give you guys a better idea of what exactly is going on currently. So, not sure how well everybody can see this, but most of the existing patio area is entirely covered with concrete. We do have two small landscaped areas that are really just grass covered by curb. And one of the existing landscaped areas is supposed to remain. The one that's to the upper left hand side of the plan is one that we plan to replace with pavers. It's about a little under 600 square feet of what's currently just grass, no plants or foliage or anything like that. And that upper one is the one that we are looking to replace with pavers.
So the, the plan is to take out the grass and put in pavers in its location?
Correct.
Are, are those same pavers being put in in the existing-
Concrete in the existing patio areas, yes.
Okay. And those pavers, are they, are they an open joint paver? Are they grouted?
So I'm not entirely sure that the property owner has decided completely what type of material they want to use. There was some discussion about using pavers and then there was some discussion about using stamped concrete as well. So I think it really would be up to the board's determination, which they would prefer to see there. They don't really have a preference at this time.
So from an engineering perspective, as it relates to managing stormwater, and while this is a relatively small area in the overall site, which has a lot of impervious area, this is kind of a very minor piece to it. You know, are, I think, one thing that the board should consider is, you know, while this small area is currently proposed to go from grass to something which might be a pervious paver, it might not be, is what-
Right.
You know, you kind of do that 10 more times and all of a sudden you've got a big change in the stormwater on the site. So our, our questions that we just sent to you in an email was really just trying to clarify from a stormwater perspective, what's going on in that small area?
Right.
If it's pervious or not. I believe that there's run on from at least two roof leaders onto that grass area.
Yeah.
And so that needs to be considered. Don't want to, you know, either, that needs to go somewhere and not just kind of create a sheet of ice-
Right.
In winter. And there was a detail in what was submitted that did, it did look like a pervious paver application. There was a stone or an item for sub base. It looked like it was an open joint paver. If that is to be used, we just had a question as to, you know, whether it would be feasible or if there was a reason not to use, if it's a pervious paver, the DEC's pervious paver section with the appropriate gravel and choker. So it may be a reason not to use it, but we just had a question as to why that wasn't being proposed or not. So I think from a stormwater perspective, if you are using pervious, a pervious system, that would make things much easier. And we would probably just suggest to the board that a condition of the approval for that be to conduct a perk test during construction to be witnessed by the town engineering person just to confirm that water does go into the ground as you intend it to and it's suitably sized.
Sure.
So a little bit more information on those pavers in that area would be, would be useful so that we can confirm that we're, from a safety and a stormwater perspective, that it's appropriate.
Looking at the diagram, you had said upper left. Could you point just for clarity so we all know exactly which grassy area? There's a pointer hanging down. There you go.
Would be, this one up here is the one that is proposed to be replaced. This one down here is going to be remaining.
Okay, the pre-existing one. So nothing where you've got the planters, what's really in front of the bank, the larger one, but the extreme upper left and the other smaller, they're staying as is?
Yep, that's-
Okay, okay.
And nothing that we're proposing is going outside of the existing curb line that's here. Everything is remaining within this existing curb line. We're not touching any blacktop.
I have a question. Are your tenants in the building aware of your plans? Involvedness at all, is this from their suggestions?
That is something that the property owner would really be better to speak to. I'm not really privy to what the tenants do or don't know about what proposed construction is going on. I would assume that they probably have not been made aware yet and that it's, it's something that they would look to see if it's feasible option here and then alert the tenants to what the plan would be.
Would we anticipate the building having to close during this? Will businesses have to close there?
No, nothing is interior, nothing is going to affect the driveway or the parking lot. All of it would be on the existing paved sidewalk area. So I doubt that we would have the tenants close. What would likely happen is it would be done kind of in pieces so that everybody is allowed access and whatever, you know, construction safety and egress plans for the tenants would be required when, before construction starts will be provided.
Any other comments, questions?
Well, my concern is that, you know, the, the curved area there, which is a fire lane-
Yes.
Is constantly a stop in the morning spot. There, I've been there many times where there's two or three cars parked there while people run into Bobos and pick up their orders. And I just was wondering if there's a way, I don't know that we would ever eliminate that from happening without having to have a, you know, a police patrol there. And that's not, you know, favorable for the, the customers of the facility either. But, you know, is this, is this, does this represent an opportunity for us to rethink maybe a pickup area? Or something to address it so that there's not that constant parking, sometimes double parking? I've seen cars, you know, too deep at the curb while people run in and pick up their orders.
So, mean, change some spots into like a short term in and out sort of-
Yeah, or maybe, maybe take that curved area and dedicate, you know, a couple of spots in that curved area as a pickup area.
Yeah, I think it's not something that had been considered in this application because we were trying to keep the scope of work outside of the parking lot and modifying any parking spaces or getting into those approvals. I can certainly speak with the, the property owner and the property manager and, and see if they have any suggestions as to how to remediate that issue of people double parking. Obviously, people should not be parking in the fire lane. Thankfully, I don't believe that this application is doing anything that would worsen that issue. It certainly does not address it, but I don't think that we're doing anything to the parking lot or to the paved area that's going to further encourage people to start parking there. But I certainly, if that's something that the board is interested in, can speak with the, the property owner about-
Just wondering if-
Their considerations.
Whether maybe there's some planning best practices for solving the problem. I mean, I know it's, you'll never eliminate the parking.
Steve, do they, or Dave, do they need additional permits if they wanted to improve the markings in the parking lot? So if they were to, during this cosmetic, we'll call it, right? This cosmetic lift, if they were able to red, yellow stripe in that area, would that require town involvement? I get what you're trying to do.
Yep.
Because now if we start modifying parking spaces, they need to be clients in a review.
Yep.
But just to, to help address, and I have seen that there, it's, and, you know, we don't blame, obviously, I don't think it would be fair to blame the landlord or even your tenants, people being selfish, choosing not to park and-
Right.
For convenience or whatever the case may be. But maybe just a reminder somehow, whether signage or stripes-
Yeah.
The no parking area, fire, you know, fire-
Right.
Anything like that, just to help emphasize.
I also can't help but think that even if we do dedicate a spot or two spots or three spots to a pickup, if those are full, people are still going to go park in the fire lane because that's what people do. I think that maybe an idea of like a sign or some kind of a reminder just to encourage people to say, hey, don't park here, maybe would be helpful. But I also believe that adding any signs to the property would require an additional site plan approval.
So let me just clarify, so Anthony, there's a, there's a marked fire lane?
I believe it is, yeah.
Okay.
Marked, but there are zebras, there are some zebra stripes.
Okay.
Sorry, this is kind of a weird angle for me, but I believe it's right here. This is the fire lane here.
Okay. So any, and this issue came up with 247 100 with the yoga studio. Any restriping of a parking lot requires a permit from the building department? So there would be some coordination with the town on, on any restriping. There may be some solutions and we could ask the applicant to continue to look at that with respect to how you can modify the, the site plan, accommodate pickup. You know, there are lots of different vendors that have apps where you do phone in and you, you're allowed to, you know, curbside pickup. You know, you name the, the food service, you know, Stu Leonard's, Chick-fil-A. You know, they all have some kind of app that helps their customers come in, pre-order, park, pick up their order.
Ride shares too, I've noticed are, are, right? So this third party ride share-
Yeah.
Can use to pick up the food. They all often have these-
Yes.
Title to that. I mean, we're getting a-
Yes.
Obvious discussion. Also for the record, Tony mentioned Bobos, but there are other businesses there that also, I don't want to pick on Bobo.
Oh, no.
They've been a mainstay in Somers for a long time. But there are, there are also a deli there and there's some other-
Yep, absolutely.
Businesses that people would have the need-
Sure, yeah.
But even-
Run in and run out.
Even the present marking is just zebra stripes, there's no fire lane mark.
So-
Maybe, maybe it could be, the paint could be refreshed and you could put something in that says no parking, fire lane.
Yeah, we could, and that's an issue I can follow up with the building department on because they keep a list and there's actually, there's supposed to be a list in the town code of every fire lane in every commercial district or, you know, facility. So we can follow up with that.
Good.
So is that something that can be accomplished outside of the-
Yes.
Of this application?
Yes.
Good.
I'm a little confused on the process that you're doing. Assuming because of the economic situation, I assume that they want to keep all the tenants that are there.
To be honest with you, I really can't speak to what their plans are for current or future tenants. I'm really not at all involved in that process. We are just the architects that work for the landlord.
No, I understand that, but I'm, I'm, I'm just a little confused that you come to us with this project without first initially talking to your tenants. Assuming that everything that you present, they approve. But if, if, if we're, if we're looking at approving something that is going to cause a problem with any of the tenants, then you might end up having to change what you're doing and thus come back to us with a revised plan. I'm, that, I'm just, it's the process. I don't, I don't know why you're not talking to the tenants first to see if there's any problems before you come to us to, to get an approval. Because if, if we, if we approve this and then you go back to your tenants and they say, well, we, we don't want this, this, this is for whatever reason, then you're going to be back here with a new site, a new site plan.
Yeah, I, I, like I said, I really can't speak to Regency Center's relationship with their tenants and the importance that they place on their tenants' opinions of changes to their properties. I highly doubt that a tenant not liking their design would cause them to redo it. At the end of the day, Regency is the property owner, so it's between them and the town, you know, what's going to go on, on their properties. I also would have a hard time believing that any of the tenants would find issue with this. I think that this is really improving the look of their shopping center, the, the, you know, it's helping with their traffic, with their customers. So I don't really see why any tenants would have an issue with it. But I guess that would be something we, we would have to look into.
Well, I think if anything, it's, it's slowing people down in a good way, giving them places to sit.
Yeah.
Suppose today, come, they run, they go, you know, maybe they'll spend more time, spend-
Yeah, that's cool, kind of.
Business. So even the other day, I was at the drive-through on the bank and there were kids, like maybe middle school age kids, waiting to be picked up.
Right.
I think it's, I think it's, suspect it's more than just food pickups or it's people pickups-
Sure, yeah.
Happening. So I think the addition of seating is, is overall, to my mind, a good, good thing.
Yeah, I mean, I've been there in the springtime and you can see that all those tables in front are full-
Absolutely.
Currently.
Right.
And on a nice day that, you know, it'll increase the foot traffic-
Oh, yeah.
For sure, I think.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I think just from, from Bruce's standpoint and mine too, it's why I asked the question. I think, little offense, but with some of the larger developers and building owners, tend to assume that the, my tenants will like it. And maybe they won't. So, and then, and then, you know, look at it like, I know Somers smiles, that owner of that, it was or is a Somers resident. So the, the representation, and you made a comment about how it's kind of between Regency and the town, and that's true, where are the town, right? And so we're here to ensure that not only the residents, but also business owners are able to function in the town, right? We're not going to build commercial areas and residential, residential, commercial, and that's to protect everyone. So I think from Bruce's standpoint, and my question was just whether or not the concept was socialized amongst, not that they have to approve it-
Right.
Just to let them know that this, this was our idea, we'd like to make improvements. And I just think, and I, and I also recognize that that may have already happened and you just don't know that because-
Absolutely.
Sign, person, and not necessarily the broker of the deal.
Absolutely, I have absolutely no relationship with any of Regency's tenants. We are their architects, we show up and do surveys and drawings like this for them. I don't speak to their tenants, I don't know what they have or have not told them or how they are going to carry their opinions on this to-
Understood, but generally that feedback may go back to Regency.
Absolutely, yeah.
They could apply it later or not, it's just, we also need to represent the businesses that are-
Absolutely, and I think that Regency in doing this, that's, Regency's goal is that they're trying to, to help the businesses, they're trying to give them more seating, give them a better facelift and more foot traffic.
Yeah, I reviewed the plan and, you know, I'm a, often a customer of multiple businesses in there and I do see this as an improvement.
Right.
But my initial question was, does anyone know?
Right, yeah, I, I'm sorry, I-
No worries, I recognize you can't answer it, but I do appreciate that.
Okay, if they're watching tonight, they'll find you.
Yeah.
And, you know, to Steve's comment about the downspouts, I count one, two, three, four, five, six downspouts from the current existing view. The one that's closest you can see must go into some kind of a drainage pipe. But, but if there's any that dump onto the area that is going to be eliminated as grass, I mean, that's, that's definitely an issue, it's, it's got to be-
Yes, we, we will absolutely address that. At this point in the project, we're kind of still a little preliminary. We haven't gotten into all of the details and nuts and bolts of how we're going to address draining and that kind of thing. Our, the purpose in us coming here was really to see how the Town of Somers would react to something like this, if it was something that was in keeping with, you know, the shopping center, if it was something that they liked and what the approval process for starting a project like this would be. So when, once we get back into the building department and Tom is reviewing our drawings and all of that, all of the drainage issues and those things will be addressed.
Well, you'll, you'll have to address those issues before you go to the building department.
Okay.
I have to address those with Mr. Robbins.
Gotcha, okay, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, otherwise, I mean, I, I think it's an improvement, I do agree with that.
Absolutely.
And it's a type two.
Correct, type two.
Which for us to really, other than a point on.
So given that the applicant needs to further clarify the materials that are going to be used for the drainage, what do you see as the next step?
Well, I, I think I would have to ask Steve if he had a comfort level that he could work with the applicant to address those and you could have that as a condition-
Condition?
Of a site plan amendment.
If that would be, is that something to become-
I, I, I take no objection to that. I'm happy to work with applicant and make sure that it's addressed to an engineer standard that should be-
Okay.
Board decides to do that.
With that thought in mind, given Dave's introduction, and I agree it's a de minimis change, although it'll be a change for the better, in a good way. I'm going to suggest that pursuant to Section 171 114 F1A, that we waive site plan requirements and public hearing for this application with the understanding that the conditions will be, have to be met to Steve's requirement on the materials that will be used and to accommodate the drainage from those downspouts.
I will second that, both.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion for each or?
A separate motion, public hearing versus, leaving the public hearing versus the, and the site plan requirements?
Would say yes.
I'll make a motion to waive the public hearing on this application.
Yeah, that's fine. The first one can cover the site visit and the second can cover the public hearing.
Okay, all right, and-
Done.
So we're done for both now?
Done already.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Second.
Second project review for tonight is Trailside Estates at Somers. This is site plan application and preliminary subdivision application. Location is Reynolds Drive, tax map 4.20-1-12 and 15.08-1-4. Applicant is proposing construction of an 81 unit townhouse community with associated appliances. Five of the 81 units will be sponsor provided and target households at or below the 120 AMI area median income. The project also proposes the construction of a community center and dog park to be located on a separate parcel which will be dedicated to the Town of Somers. The property is accessed through Somers Realty Plan Hamlet via Reynolds Drive and is located in the MFRBP multifamily residential Baldwin Place zoning district. So that's all I have to say for now. So, oh, well, I, I do want to say that I am operating at a bit of a disadvantage because I didn't receive the memo this morning, work all day. So when I read everything, I read with your very precise response back, Rich. And so as we discuss, I'm going to have to reconcile the memo from this morning with what I was looking at with the plans. So I'm going to apologize in advance for any clunkiness about my questions that you may get here.
No problem. Good evening, for your record, my name is Williams, I'm with Insight Engineering. Also with me is Mr. Ken Carney of Carney Realty Development and Charles Martino, our Lanius attorney. So this project's been before the town for several years. We haven't seen this board in a few months because we've been working on resolving the technical comments from what are in current. We prepared what I believe is pretty comprehensive resubmission, set of drawings, supplemental reports. As you do go through the what are in current memo, I, I believe you'll see that the majority of the comments are now addressed. We do have a few additional technical comments in that memo, which I'm sure Steve will go through in a few minutes. But our next step in the process with you is to move towards a public hearing if the board is comfortable. We think with the remaining technical comments, we're at a point where we should discuss if we're ready to go. We do obviously know for the next resubmission, we have to address the outstanding comments.
Okay, we certainly did get a lot of information. I don't know who, Dave or Steve wants to go first? I don't know who, Dave or Steve wants to go first?
Yeah, my comments are brief. The, I think there was also, we discussed briefly that your, was the village or the town is still waiting for responses from the, on the watershed inspector general's memo, is that correct?
Correct. So the watershed inspector general's office did issue a comment letter on this. It was one of the more unique comment letters from them I've ever received in that it predominantly, and almost all of the comments were erosion control based and phasing based. So a lot of times they'll start, you know, they'll look at site plan related stuff, they'll look at layouts, they'll look at much more comprehensive comments. This, this was a pretty focused memo. We are working through the phasing numbers now and basically what they really asked us to do was get into more depth within our phasing and really get more detailed erosion controls during construction. I would expect within the next week or two, we'll have a response back to their memo.
And the other comment I had is that, and we had discussed this at, at some point, Ken, with the timing, the, when the community recreation facility would come online or be available and how that's reflected as part of the community benefit agreement as part of this project. And I know you, you said you were going to work on that, or that's where you continue to work on that.
Working on that and rolling.
Right. So, Madam Chair, I, I, I'll also defer to Steve and to, to Michael, but I feel comfortable that there's a, a lot of information, enough information for the town to at least open the public hearing to get the process started. And then the other information, as it becomes available, should be provided before the board considers closing the public hearing. But I think at least in, in, from my review of the, the information and the plans submitted, that there's more than enough information to at least open the public hearing.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Jack.
Going through the report, our engineer, there's a question about looking at the composition of the soil in the areas that were used as an orchard or whatever it was, where the, where the planting took place in prior years. I'm just curious, why does that matter?
And I think the applicant can address this as well. We, we've started our review of this. The applicant's provided some, well, at a, at a prior meeting, probably the last time this was before your board, there was a question asked about whether there's any residual concerns with the prior use as a, as an orchard. The applicant, after some discussion, willingly agreed to go out and sample some soils there as part of the moving of the soils on their site. It's something they would have to do anyway, in terms of understanding the, whether there's any, anything in that soil that is of concern to the workforce that's, that's there on the site doing the construction, say. And so they went out and, and performed some sampling. They provided a report, at least to me, I don't know if it's been provided broadly to the board yet, with some initial results and an initial soil management plan for the site. And we're asking for some clarification on what areas that applies to and in what areas they're proposing different kinds of controls to make sure that there is good worker safety on the site and no concerns for the ongoing use as a residential property. So some of the underlying soil levels are elevated relative to unrestricted residential use. And there's absolutely a, a number of ways that that can be dealt with, and we're just asking the applicant to clarify in what areas of the site they're proposing, which methods, so that we know that it's all by the book.
So was this concern about pesticide use because there was an orchard area?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And I'll, I'll leave it to the, the applicant to present their, their results and discuss that now or, or when it's appropriate.
Working my way, I'm working my way through.
I, I'll, I'll keep, I'll, if you don't mind, Chairman, I can go through a few things while you're going through that. The applicant has, has addressed the, the vast majority of our comments. We did on review of additional information provided as part of this, come up with a couple of areas where we noted either discrepancies or a need for some clarification or some additional information. Relative to the overall plan, they are, they're relatively minor. There are other areas where we think there might be a conflict between elevations of utilities or just in the weeds of some of the stormwater modeling to make sure that, that if anyone else were to question this or to review it, that it's clear and it's complete and, and it was done, done correctly and appropriately. And hopefully, I, I think that they are relatively easy to, to address. I know the applicant probably hasn't had time to review our memo yet, but our remaining comments are relatively minor and, and I agree with Dave that if the board so chooses, it's, it's probably a good time to, for the board to consider whether to schedule a public hearing. Our comments are not anything that we think needs to be addressed prior to that.
Okay.
Another question in reflecting on where we are and where we started this from, there was an issue with an adjacent property, which is Green Tree. And I've heard rumblings that that's about to come back to this board. I don't know if they have or have not presented anything, but in the community itself are rumblings that this is coming back at us. Prior to that happening, I want to keep in mind that one of the things that were generously offered by the owner of the property is that he developed an access to that Green Tree development, the three homes there, through this property. So before it's finalized and, and they're off and running in construction, is there any way to, I don't know, stir the waters and, and get some kind of an answer as to whether or not that's going to come back and bite us? Maybe?
Well, yeah, well, let, let Ken begin to respond and I can kind of fill in, or Charlie, but let, let them respond.
Yes.
Just to the, to the offer, yeah.
Sure. Good evening. Great to see everybody again. We came in front of this board in September 2023. We just got the green light, if you will, from the town board, and we came here for a referral. And the question was asked, would you grant access to the proposed property? And I stated at the time, it's not, it's, nothing is attractive to us about it, however we will. We've never turned any board down in this town. We've had tremendous success in this town, and one of the reasons for it is because of our working relationship with this town. When I came back in front of the board, probably last spring, I reiterated that offer, and that is an offer. Recently, I think during the summer, there were questions and so forth. Did you say it? Didn't you say it? Blah, blah, blah. So I put it in a letter. I clarified it in a letter. This is what I said. It still holds true. My handshake is everything in this town. And yes, it's nothing that is, you know, this is a certain development with a certain feel. It doesn't benefit us, but we will do that and we will work to make it as seamless as possible. We will make a connection right up to, with the board's approval. We could make a, a connection right up to that property line. Further to that, Charlie had a phone call from the, from the owners over there discussing how it would work and, and the nuances and stuff. And there was a letter that their attorney sent to the town. And Charlie sent a response letter just clarifying what our understanding was. And the clarification was that, yes, we'll do this. There's things to be worked out, but we'll do it. And one of the concerns was that this isn't real yet. And I, I don't know, I think it's pretty real because we have the rezone, we have SECA. I'm not presumptuous in front of this board, but it is real. So we, we did state it. Something happens to me, my son knows. So it's, we can put that in, we're comfortable with that somehow, some way. We haven't shown on the plan an exact connection point.
Right.
But we can, we can. There's a couple nuances. We have an HOA here, right? We have an HOA. How is that going to work? I don't know. Well, there's always a way to figure it out, right? So, so yes, the answer is yes. Couple more things on the, on the community center. Charlie and Roland are having a detailed discussion about after how many units, right? After how many units of CO? And I was, I was smiling because when we did the Crossroads project, if you remember, I was not in favor or crazy about doing that commercial building, right? I, but it was a thought and the motion was made to approve, somebody seconded it, and then somebody said, wait a minute, how do we know he's going to do what he says he's going to do? And we came up, you, the board came up with the idea to hold the CO on the last residential building until I hit a certain mark or progress on the front building. I think it had to be framed, roof on, windows in and so forth. And thank you, because we probably would not have moved as fast as we did with that building and had the success that we've had in that building. It wasn't our, commercial isn't our bread and butter, if you will, but I think both of us, my son and I, learned a lot and it worked out pretty well. So Charlie and Roland aren't leaving it to me this time. I think they're getting more detailed. So it'll come down to certain steps have to be done before, you know, a number of units, all right? But we're, we're looking forward to, to building the community center. Councilman Clinchy is still trying to get me to extend it, but we've set it up in a way that it can be added on to at a later date. And we're very, we're going to be very proud of that. I think that's, that's really going to be a benefit to, to the community. So I think I answered every.
I just want to point out that the letter that Kenny's referring to, I sent it to the ZBA. I also sent a copy to Roland when I sent it out. If you'd like me to send a copy up to the board, they could see it. I'm happy to do that. And that was sent out probably less than a month and a half ago.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor, was there anything that you wanted to say?
Regarding whether or not to schedule a public hearing, I defer to Mr. Robbins and Mr. Smith. However, given that you haven't had a chance to review the soil testing reports, you may want to wait. That's my only comment on that. I did have one question for the applicant. Mr. Brody and I were discussing earlier, access to the county sewer district. He asked for an update. So if you want to send that to him via email, that's fine, but otherwise, we're just curious.
Sure. Let me say, the process hasn't been as fluid as my other ones. I've done this three or four times, but there was a disconnect with some paperwork, but that seems to be on track. We have the will serve letter from, from the county and we're hoping, hoping to be on the board of legislators meeting soon. I don't know if that means there's a meeting Monday. I don't know if it means as soon as Monday or if it goes into December. But the last I heard, there were questions, we answered, there were more questions at the beginning of September, answered that, and then there was a question probably two, three weeks ago on the final, what the estimated final assessment was going to be after build out, and I worked with the assessor on that. We got that. So I'm hoping that's the last piece. And then we should be, we should be in good shape, hopefully.
Just one more thing to, to clarify. The soil management plan was included in our submission, so everybody should have received a copy.
I was operating off the common.
Yeah, I, I had heard that and I didn't.
And we haven't seen it and we discussed, I've discussed it with Roland earlier, so we were curious as to.
Yeah, it was.
So my comment was the board, just so we, until they have an opportunity to review it, generate questions, they may want to delay opening the public hearing, they may want to give it a month or scheduling the public hearing. It's in their discretion whether or not they want to schedule it. However, the alternative is to be to schedule to open it, open it, and then adjourn it until they have that opportunity. So, you know, it's in the board's discretion. That was my opinion.
Yes, and if I could, I'll, I'll touch on the soil. This is not a situation that's uncommon to us. We just built a complex in Highland, the town of Lloyd, former orchard. We worked with the soil management plan. There was testing done before. We moved some of the soil. There was, then we do post-testing and check the endpoints to assure that after we moved it, everything is below the certain levels and that soil stayed on site. As far as soil management, Sean and I have done eight brownfield. This is not a brownfield. This is not elevated. The results here were not, were nothing very alarming. Let me say that. They were, they were mixed. There were a lot of no detects, but there were some that exceeded. And so it's totally manageable. Mixed results, but very, very manageable. We're hoping that we do what we did in Lloyd, come up with a soil management plan. If not, if, as we're going through this, because this is an approximation, when we're dealing with this, we take our end results, and if it's more than what we thought, then we have to export because we have it at a certain level. But the brownfields that we're, we have done, we did a large brownfield in Peekskill, did a large, two large brownfields in Poughkeepsie. We have one underway right now in Saranac Lake. We have one up in Lockport outside of Buffalo, one in Gloversville, and we finished one in Newburgh. And all of those involved soil management plans. So we're familiar with this process. And we do it all, when I say we do it all ourselves, we manage it ourselves through our subcontractors. We work with our environmental consultants, but we're hand on, we have our own construction company. And when it comes to the soil management plan, we, my son and I are in charge. So this is, this is another step in the process. I encourage everybody to read the soil management plan if there's any questions. I did see your comments, Steve. I sent it to our environmental consultant. I said, help me come up with some more approximates, but there's nothing in there that is alarming to me. I can show you a site I'm working on upstate that's quite alarming, but that's another thing. Thank you.
It's not here.
One question I had was, as I said, I was working from, maybe it's a moot point now. I was working, Rich, from your responses, number 39. This was about applicant proposes creation of two to one steep slope down grading of lots 46 and 49. Applicant shall explain how creation of these steep slopes will not cause adverse impacts downstream, especially noting that this abuts right against the wetland buffer. And it was something in your response that I was trying to understand. Stormwater runoff from the buildings and the road immediately uphill of the reference area is being captured and conveyed by the proposed stormwater collection and conveyance system. And it was the next sentence that lost me. The reference slope will be vegetated with erosion control matting and will mainly experience sheet flow across it. Mainly experienced, I was, what did that mean?
That is because I am an engineer and it takes a whole lot for me to actually express a qualified term. The way that slope is designed is we're going to be picking the runoff, and I'm just, I'm checking the plan real quick while we talk, but we're picking the runoff.
That's SP 23, 2-3, I think is the sheet where I saw those units.
Yeah. And.
I was on the kitchen floor. I had sheets of paper taped together. It was spectacular left.
So there's not a large uphill tributary area at slope. And generally, when we think about sheet flow versus the next step in flow, shallow concentrated flow, that, that typically occurs beyond 150 feet. We don't, without that large uphill tributary area, there's going to be sheet flow over that slope. Two-on-one slopes are not atypical in construction. And what you really have to worry about when you. And what you really have to worry about when you build them is making sure that the vegetation gets established on them properly. And the real trick is how you put the erosion control matting on them. Steve and I see probably more often than we both like, if you don't anchor that matting properly, and not only at the top of the slope, but throughout the whole slope, it doesn't bond well enough with the soil to get the vegetation started. And then at that point, you get railing underneath the matting that doesn't become evident later on. Where these slopes are designed, the minimal uphill tributary area, which is what I was talking about in that comment or in that response, is, is why these slopes are going to be okay. If I had a large tributary area with a large running slope where I'm going to actually start to see concentrated water before I hit the top of the slope, we would pick the water off differently.
Okay. So the sidewalk question. Sidewalks, this was, there was a question about sidewalks. Why not include in sidewalks on the west side of the main road? But does not specify why a crosswalk connecting the west of the east is not included in the layout design. Can we talk about sidewalks? That was number 45 in Steve's.
So the way we've designed the community is we're going to have a sidewalk on the lower side of the road. The comment was made, should you put sidewalks down both sides? I am in an ever competing battle with everyone in the stormwater community telling me to create less impervious surfaces. The buzzwords on the street are you should go back to planning and zoning and talk about narrowing roads. Right? But at the same time, then I run into the New York State Fire Code, which actually tells us we should widen roads.
Sure.
And I, and I end up in this tussle. When we look at a townhouse community like this and, and how it's going to be experienced and how it's going to be used, I don't believe we need that much impervious surface or that sidewalk on both sides of the street. So as of right now, we just have the one side. It's typical for how we do townhouse communities. And then in the latest comment, there was some additional questions about crosswalks. I honestly need to talk them over with Steve, but it's, it's something we're happy to look at when I understand the comment a little better.
Okay. So crosswalks will be discussed. Okay. Sounds good.
In certain areas, you know, you know, where we are crossing like a roadway, crosswalks make sense.
I believe there was a response to one of Steve's questions earlier today that I saw when I came in tonight that regards the fact that no other development of this type even has sidewalks. The question, that was an answer to why only on one side? And if that's true, it's great. We appreciate the fact there's a sidewalk, one side or both.
We, we asked the applicant to provide to the board and, and, you know, via our comment, to have exactly this discussion for the, the board to, to understand the, the process that the applicant has undergone and the evaluations that they have done around circulation, around access and around these kinds of amenities and, and how they make a decision around this so that the board can understand. And, and I would agree that there are a lot of communities in Somers with similar density that, that don't have sidewalks. And in some cases, it might be appropriate. In other cases, it presents a challenge to the residents of that community. I think that it's, it's reasonable in this case, in, in my opinion, for the applicant to say, we're, we're putting a sidewalk on the road, on the side of the road that has the most units. That this isn't a, a through fare. People who are coming into this community are presumably part of this community. And there isn't, this isn't connecting a main road on the other side where you have a lot of through traffic. It's, it's a, it's a dead end, it's a circulation. And so the limited number of units that are there, it's, it's not a multi-lane highway that they're crossing to get to the sidewalk on the other side. We just wanted that, that's not my decision though. That's the board's decision. We wanted them to justify what they had presented and that was the reason for our comment and the way we ordered it that way. We weren't trying to lead them astray. We're trying to make sure that the board got the information it needed to say, yes, that we're okay with that, or no, we think it should be something different.
Just refresh my recollection on the parking plan. Will the unit owner park on the unit property or on the street?
So we have garages. We also have driveways. And I'm just pulling up the parking numbers now. We have more parking than we need. So right now we have 162 spaces in driveways, 81 garage spaces and 70 visitor spaces. We've added more visitor parking here than we have in, in some of our previous communities. We think it's important. We've also spread that visitor parking throughout the development to try and pick locations that are convenient to sectors of the development. For instance, you know, we didn't stack all of the parking here. There's no density or no density of units, right? We, we scattered, you know, convenient for here. We put some at the middle over here and we kind of spread those 70 spaces throughout. So holidays, people come to visit, there's a little bit more parking.
Okay. Yeah, I get that. And, and the reason why I asked that is, it, and you guys know, I've done some spearheading of sidewalks for Somers. Kind of got that initiative started about 15 years ago. I'm apt to believe that one sidewalk is sufficient in, in the sense that if we're not relying on street parking, right? If someone who lives on that west, what is that, the east side of the, of the development, they can cross the street and walk on the sidewalk to go to the neighbor's house. Or they can choose to walk in the street. It's, it's, to your point, it's not a through fare. We don't anticipate a ton of traffic, right? Other than residents coming in and out, maybe some service vehicles here and there. So from a safety perspective, I think the fact that there is even a single sidewalk through the project in, in my eyes is, is sufficient. You know, you, you, you over concrete things and we, we start looking like an urban development. And we all know that that's not what Somers is about. You know, we try to keep this as rustic and as bucolic as possible and yet maintain density for, you know, 82 families. So I think it's a good trade-off, in my opinion.
Is there some kind of planning standard that predicts foot traffic? For, for a development like this? I mean, it, it seems like people probably wouldn't even walk out to the recreation center. They'd probably drive towards it from the other end of the, the development. So, I mean, it, it, it just, I, I, I find it hard to believe that two sidewalks would be necessary for the amount of, you know, people living in this development.
So as far as like a, a guidebook or like a building code to go to, there's not. There are, there are sidewalk design standards. Actually, it was the last question on my PE exam. Design width of the sidewalk in an urban environment.
Did you get it right?
Also. But, you know, as far as, you know, should your community have one or two? I, I think it's kind of based on how you see the community experienced, the type of environment and community you're in at large. We're certainly being more respectful of multimodal transportation and site design than I'm, I'm going to say we probably ever have been. I think having a sidewalk in this community is an important feature. You know, this is an area where, you know, sometimes you do want to ride your bike in the street. I happen to live in a neighborhood where that still happens. But at the same time, I think, you know, you also want to give our, your residents an option to walk with a stroller or maybe walk your dog in an area where you don't feel the pressure of dodging cars. We also want to create that pedestrian field because we're next to a nice shopping center. And we are going to have sidewalks that continue to that shopping center through the road network and tie into the Plannham Lake sidewalk network. So I think carrying the sidewalk and encouraging walkability is an important thing. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to see this development with no sidewalks. But I think one's appropriate and not over sidewalking it. You know, again, I think your comment is, is right on point. It's a little out of character in our community.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, considering that we, you know, we, we've gone years without sidewalk development and we're still in its overall infancy stages, if you will, right? I, I think it's a small bite and I, but I think it's appropriate. I think the option for the walkable community is there. You know, studies have shown that's, it's good for resale. It's good for, for home values. It's good for, for, you know, attracting, you know, young families with kids to strollers, like you said. And all of that sounds like Somers to me. So I, I think the one sidewalk would be appropriate. I don't see the need for two, but that's my opinion.
I tend to agree. And I think everything we're hearing too, on a health basis, you know, public health, that walking is very healthy. So I think anything we can do to encourage that and with connectivity, it's going to be a good thing. Where I live, there are no sidewalks and a constant stream of people walking by. So you don't need sidewalks to have people want to walk. And I think it's best to provide something so that people can walk safely and not be in the flow of traffic. For the, for the drivers as well. You don't want to have to be skirting around walkers if you don't have to. So, no, I think that's good. Relate, relate, ooh, sorry.
Yeah. No, I just wondered how on the visitors parking, how, how many spaces did you say?
Seventy.
And you, you said you have garages and driveways.
So the, the garages here, we actually have two spaces per unit in the driveway. So they're, they're wider. So if you're, if you're thinking of like Hidden Meadow, since these are wider driveways, so each unit can fit two cars in the driveway. We have 162 spaces there. There's, there's also a space in the garage if a tenant wants to use it. And then we also have 70 visitor spaces.
So you have, okay, so you have three spaces per unit.
Almost, yeah. We're right there because we have 81 units and 70 visitor spaces.
Yeah. The, the only reason I'm bringing it up is that we're running into problems in heritage where there are not enough visitors parking because you end up having residents with three and four cars. And it's becomes a difficult situation. So I just am concerned that there's enough visitors parking.
Yeah. It was, it was, it was actually one of our conversations we had in this forum a couple of years ago. And our original plan, I think we were in the 50s. And it was actually, you know, working with your board that we increased that visitor, if I remember correctly. Now it's, we share, we share your thought on that and we want to make sure we have enough.
Somewhat on a related topic of paths and walking. Items number 47 and 48, coming off your memo. This was about the wood chip trail. And going ahead been, this is the Woodford Trail that goes between the community center and the dog park. And then on 48, Rich, on your response, the question from Steve was, the applicant shall clarify if there's any proposed grading for the proposed dog park area along the connection pathway to the community center. And your response, Rich, was, no grading is proposed within the dog park and connecting pathway as existing grades fall within ADA accessible route standards. Which put it in my mind, and I don't know this, is a wood chip path considered an ADA accessible pathway?
It is not. That is actually one of the things we're talking about internally is about that trail and whether it needs to be a more stabilized surface for accessibility.
Good. Okay. So that, that's to be further discussed. Okay. All right. Number 48. Somewhere in here, and I, I really thought I saw it, I'm not seeing it right now. Was there a discussion about irrigation? There's a question about amount of water. And I think the response was that there won't be irrigation, so it becomes a non-issue. Is that, am I miss, did I?
I saw.
Imagine that? I think I remember, it's somewhere in here.
I, I took that to, that there's no sprinkler systems, is that?
We, yeah, we're not proposing an irrigation system in the community.
System, okay. So my thing is, if you're not proposing an irrigation system within the community, could you nevertheless have individuals who purchase the home and then want to put irrigation in, in front of their home? I've seen it happen, in my neighborhood. Does that need to be accounted for?
I don't believe the HOA agreement would let somebody do that.
It wouldn't allow it? Okay. All right. Just wanted to ask. And then more questions. Wait a minute. The seven phases. The five units that are going to be at the 120% of the AMI, what phase do they get built in? I was just curious, kind of on a related to that it gets built sort of issue.
Yeah. It will get built.
I know.
But that's a great question. I guess, Charlie?
Yes.
That's part of, you finalize.
We have not, Roland and I have not discussed that, but obviously it's something we can incorporate.
Right. Maybe.
I don't know if that's that long.
No, not.
Right.
No, that's a county requirement.
So, so those five units, it's interesting. You know, I've done a lot of affordable workforce and so forth. But these five are, don't have any type of government involvement at all. It was something that we discussed with the county. And 120%, it's pretty neat. And it goes up to family, I think 170,000, 180,000. But yet the purchase price will still be, I think, below $600,000. Wow. It's pretty good. That was like the starting purchase price for the market rate, you know, it's at Hidden Meadow. So timing wise, yeah, I, let's, we'll have to do something that, can we do something similar to what we did at Crossroads? I can't get my final COs until we're up and framed and I'm not going anywhere.
I know.
Unless my son kicks me out. But, but yeah, we'll do something like that. Whatever you think is agreeable.
Okay. And I also had a question about the lighting plan. Thinking back and can you remember, and, and you will probably, Rich, public hearings on previous developments that happened up in Baldwin Place. People from the public would come and they would be concerned about the amount of lighting and that they wouldn't want extra lighting flowing on to where they are. And when I looked at the lighting plan, it was, I had the two packets and the last sheet in one packet was the first sheet of the lighting plan. And it had an image of a light that was sort of more rectangular. And it didn't, didn't necessarily look like light was being cast down. So could you walk me through the lighting plan and describe to me the fixtures? And is the lighting different in the residential area versus in the parking for the community center? Just give me the overall sense, because I'm not a lighting expert and it's a lot of dots on plans to me, honestly, Rich. But I did see that fixture and I was a little concerned because it didn't look like it was pointing down. It looked decorative, but not necessarily like it would give someone a sense that light wouldn't be shining in all directions.
From the picture, a good pickup. It's, it's actually a light fixture I think many on the board are, are familiar with. It's, it's the one we use at Meadow. It's also at Muse 1 and Muse 2. It's a globe style, so it's a little bit more vintage look, historic looking.
Pretty, yes.
But it does come with a top cap.
Okay.
And the, and the light sits up into the top cap and it has house side shields on it. So the light, the glass will glow like, like a historic light would. But you don't actually see the light because of where it sits in the fixture.
Okay. Because those pieces were not included in the image.
It's, it's, I agree with you. It's tough to see in the image. Because yeah, the, the picture looks like it's still a translucent top, but it's, it's the light that you guys have actually.
Okay.
Hidden Meadow and elsewhere.
All right. And then is the, the intensity of the light, is it different? Could you describe to me the effect of the light in the residential versus the, I wouldn't say commercial, but the community center dog park?
We actually are proposing just a single pole throughout the community and the center. 14 feet in height. So, you know, in the community center, we didn't, we didn't switch to a more commercial lighting. We've kept it, we've kept it similar. We're, we're kind of lucky in that we're in our own little island. We're kind of nestled down, you know, we, we talked about this a lot early on with where our conservation easement area is and how that creates a high point that, that then comes back down and we sit on the other side. Even from our neighbors to the west, right? They're, you know, we're kind of nestled down in a hill and we're in our own little, little valley.
So even the people that were over there on the left-hand side, next to where it says North County Trailway, that, that area there, they'll be.
There's going to be up and down on the gradient. And if you remember, you know, this is actually the part of the trailway that sits in a valley.
Right.
So, and you're closer, as you, as you come, you're at the same elevation as the homes and the ponds behind Meadow Park. And then the grade.
Goes up.
Up.
Yep.
Then comes back down and then we're on the, the far hill. So, and all of our light spillage, we've really kept, you know, tight to the area development.
Okay. I think that was the last of my questions. Other questions? No?
Good.
No questions for now? Paul? Questions?
No.
Okay. What does everybody think about? What does everybody think about scheduling to open the public hearing in December? Applicant, you should, I don't know if you know that we are not meeting our usual date in December. There's a scheduling conflict, so our December meeting is going to be the third Wednesday. This is my reminder, I'm also gonna give at the end of the meeting, Wednesday, the 17th of December, same time, 7:30, but, but we are meeting on the 17th of December. That's the number right, yeah. So I, for one, based on everything I've heard, would be comfortable with scheduling to open the public hearing on that Wednesday, and at least get the discussion started, see what the community has to say. You can keep working on information exchange and gathering of more information in the meantime. We could all think about what we've heard tonight as well.
Yeah, I, I would be willing to second that motion. I, I appreciate counsel's advice about the soil reports, but the applicant's been at this for 30 years. I trust that he knows how to mitigate this, and yeah, I think it's worthy, we'll get it, and we'll review it. But I think the public will have an opportunity to give an opinion, probably even before the 17th, before we get that information, and they access it on the website, Soil Report, when it gets published. From the town, Somers, yeah, that's true. So yeah, so I would be comfortable seconding your motion to open a public hearing as soon as possible.
Now, your feedback or concerns, any agreement? All right, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the, we've scheduled the hearing for the public hearing to open on the 17th of December. Look forward to seeing you back then, more information. And, you know, wherever you go, it's holiday cheer, Ken.
Cheerio.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Giants.
The last item on tonight's agenda is a referral by the Somers Town Board for a public hearing on application for a floating zone designation to accommodate solar energy system on the Putnam North, Northern Westchester Bosie campus. Should be very familiar to us, we just discussed this the last, the last two meetings ago. The town board has received a request to apply a solar energy system floating zone to Putnam Northern Westchester Board of Cooperative Education Services, BOSIS, to be applied to approximately 11.8 acres of the BOSIS campus located in the town of Somers. The proposed action is a zoning map amendment to designate an approximately 11.8 acre portion of the BOSIS campus as a tier-three energy system. So Dave, could you give us some context on this?
Yes, Madam Chair, the, as you had alluded to, the board had discussed proposed zoning text amendments. It was either your last meeting or the meeting before, as you had mentioned. And this was a response to BOSIS wanting to install a tier-three system on their property. Currently, or at that time, that type of use was not a permitted use in the town of Somers. So the Somers Town Board went through the process of crafting zoning language that would allow for that type of use. In addition to, we had talked about the tier-one, which is a much smaller system, is really meant for application on individual residences or, or commercial establishments. And those tier-one systems, they would just go to the building department for a building permit. But the tier-three, given that they're larger, would, and those tier-three systems are limited to either a, a public school or a school of higher education. The property has to be 12 acres or less, and it has to be in the R120 zoning district. So really, that only applies to the BOSIS facility. There were two of the Somers school district properties, I think Lincoln Hall and JFK. So the, that, that type of use is extremely limited within the town of Somers. And the intent was, and Michael, you can pick up if I, if I missed anything, but the intent was that these facilities serve the public. They serve the town of Somers, and the BOSIS actually serves a larger constituency. But the intention was that this is a benefit to those institutions, which in turn lowers their operating costs, and that savings gets passed on to the constituents, town of Somers constituents, or for the, the people who use the BOSIS facilities. And so that was really the, the thought process behind the town wanting to limit that type of use to just those types of, of areas. So the, the text amendments were adopted, they were approved, and now BOSIS has submitted a letter, formal letter, that was part of the public hearing notice, asking to have the district apply to that portion of their Somers campus. And they, the location and the, the site plan have been provided as part of the public hearing notice, which you have. So that's, so procedurally, the town board referred this, and they refer zoning text and zoning map amendments to the planning board as requirement under the town code. As you recall, there, there's an issue with timing, and because the town board needed to meet on the 10th, which was your normal meeting, that's why they kind of expedited the process a little bit, so that you could have a chance to review this referral and get back to them before their meeting on December 10th. So that's really the, the intention here, just as public notice. BOSIS has a community meeting with the neighbors tonight about their application. So the, the neighbors in that immediate vicinity, in that neighborhood, have an opportunity to, to discuss this directly with BOSIS and their proposed action. But for now, the action that you're considering is just the application of the, the floating zone to that specific portion of the BOSIS campus. And I would ask Michael if you have anything to add or add to that description.
Dave nailed it. I couldn't have said it better myself.
Happens to everyone.
He also nailed the, this entire procedure, which he should get credit for. I did give the town board an update on the status of the project, and that BOSIS has commenced site preparation. They have a deadline of December 31st, where they have to construct or complete 5% of the proposed array, which includes clearing, I believe, establishing the driveway, and commencing the infrastructure necessary to install the panels. We haven't reviewed any of those agreements, that we're not privy to them, so I can't speak particularly to it. Although myself, Dave, and Steve were involved in a lot of negotiations and discussions amongst BOSIS, and Steve was involved with the review for the stormwater prevention plan and other stormwater concerns with the Department of Environmental Protection. And we were involved with discussions with the highway department, and then DeVito, and Mr. Tuma from the building department regarding Bureau of Fire Prevention concerns, and the highway department's current concerns regarding the driveway, and BOSIS has agreed to all their, all their requests. So they're in the process of drafting an intermeasible agreement, which will cover those requests, and BOSIS or Johnson Controls, the actual contractor, will comply with them. Tomorrow, I intend to drive by the campus to determine what extent they've commenced work. I've requested it from their attorney, David Shaw. There was a lot of discussion last week in advance of the town board meeting, but I have yet to receive the actual timeline and extent of work that'll be conducted from now through December 31st. Otherwise, he did send me the placard for the building permits approved by the Department of Education, which according to the local law, at least the last draft I saw before, was exempts the project from site plan review and special exception use permit, so long as the commissioner has endorsed the site plan and specifications, and those are filed with the building department.
And so you got evidence of that, that that's, that that's happened?
Working on that.
That's what you're working on, okay.
I received what is posted in the window whenever someone gets granted a building permit, and I've requested the others, I was, you know, they've told me that they received 20 building permits issued by the Department of Education, signed by the commissioner. I'm waiting on receipt of those.
Okay.
So we're holding their feet to the fire. This is an ongoing thing for 11 months now. So again, I'll, I'll have a better update for you once I perform the site visit and get a response.
Okay. Sounds good. So for our part, do we need to send a memo to the town board saying we have no objection?
If that's, if that's the consensus of the board, we could certainly relay that back to the town board, yes.
I mean, I would say, my feeling, just one person of, that was sort of the purpose of why we were considering doing this, was to make it available for BOSIS to be able to do solar work on the site. So I, I, I'm in favor of just sending a memo saying we have no objection to the application of the floating zone.
Yeah, if that's a motion, I'll second that.
Can I ask a quick question on this? So I'm, I'm assuming on the land that the yellow outline is, is the BOSIS campus, right? On the?
That is the site of the array extending, so if you're on Pines, Pines Bridge Road, where it intersects with Mosman Avenue, there's a large open field, it's approximately 12 acres to the west. That will be the site of the solar array, it's, it's.
The red, is the red field, the.
Yeah, Paul, you're, if, are you referring to tax, this tax map?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, so the, the area that's outlined post-solar energy floating zone designation, that's the approximately 12 acres.
That's it.
That, yes, that.
But, so.
Floating zone would be applied, and that essentially, the, the following page is the, kind of the, the array itself.
Yeah.
So it's basically an overlay of.
Right.
Yep.
So the BOSIS campus itself is much larger.
It's much bigger, it's 247 acres, and that includes essentially a, a fair portion on, then also land area on, in the town of Yorktown.
Okay, I'm just curious why it was decided to put that, that ray right along Pines Bridge Road? Like, there's, there seems to be a lot of land there, and I travel that road pretty frequently, and it's a nice wooded road. So I'm just wondering, like, what was, or, you know, is that part of our jurisdiction here? To understand why it was decided to put that right there, because it feels like that's just like a ton of road frontage?
There, there is, it's a good question. There is, there is vegetation currently along the road. My understanding is that's going to remain. Now, whether they enhance that with additional landscaping, that's a fair question to ask, and you may wanna add that as a comment back to, to the town board. But looking at the, the plan itself, just to the west, there's some fairly steep grades. And so I think where they're proposing the, the solar arrays probably makes sense for them, because it's in the correct location to capture as much sunlight as possible. And the terrain isn't, it's, it's not as difficult to work with as if you move further to the west.
Got it.
I suspect that's probably why they, they picked the optimal location on the site.
And that, if you, as you move, as you're looking at the, the page, as you move over to the left, slope is.
Yeah, the topography gets much steeper.
David, if I look correctly, there's a, there's an existing roadway there also, or driveway, from a, from the previous entrance that was there many years.
Yeah, it may be an informal, or it's, it, it, it needs to be improved to a standard, and I think the town has, Town Highway Department has suggested you need to include this as a design feature for that. And I think that's what Michael alluded to, back to the coordination between both the town and BOSIS and their.
And with the DOE exemptions, they won't be in front of us with a site plan, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so that's, unfortunately, like, those questions, I don't think they have to answer per se.
They don't.
Right?
But, but I don't, I, I think you could certainly have it as a comment in the response back to the town board that, you know, the town board, they could certainly pass that along to, and, you know, Michael's in constant contact with the BOSIS representative, and he could certainly say, listen, it came up with the planning board last night, and this was one of the concerns.
Yeah.
There was, they did do an informal meeting with neighbors along Pines Bridge back in February of this year, and one of the concerns was, you know, appearance.
Yeah.
The neighbors requested screening. I haven't seen any design plan for screening, but the BOSIS reps have told us repeatedly that they intend to screen along Pines Bridge to prevent, you know, people from having to look at the array from their front doors.
Do we know how close the, the array is to the actual road? I mean, it looks like it runs right there, I can't tell from the.
It's not a big area, I've driven by it a number of times. I'm assuming, given, you know, the degree of screening, there may be, I think the panels, they're angled. I don't remember the degree they're angled, but they're approximately eight feet tall. So depending on the extent of the site work and grading they do, if they were to remove a lot of soil to make it as level as possible, they may reduce, you know, view shed or the panel shelves. And then there's, of course, you know, they're gonna install a fence, I think it was floated, a sixer fence west of the neighbors, or some other form of screening, but I confirm that. I would think the array, given the sheer magnitude of it, will probably get fairly close to Pines Bridge Road, but I can't speak for certain.
Yeah, and you can, you can look at the, the plan that was submitted, and it's hard to tell at this scale, but looking at it on a computer, you can blow it up and see that, you know, there's probably 15 to 20 feet at least of separation between the proposed array and Pines Bridge Road. In fact, it may be more.
16 feet. Does the road has to be built to accommodate a fire apparatus entering it?
Does.
It's gonna be fair distance, maybe 30, 50 feet, it could be longer.
Yeah, so.
Further distance from the road. However, you know, when you drive along Pines Bridge, as you said, you look into that field, and it's right there.
Yeah.
It's a shallow ditch, and then you're at that field in the tree line.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
How proximate? I can't say exactly.
I mean, it might be wise to suggest that the, as far as I understood the presentation to the fire board was, it was gonna be surrounded with a perimeter fence with a, with a gate for access. And maybe we can request, consider, you know, putting some slats in the fence along the roadway so that it, you know, that further shields it.
You should put whatever comments you'd like to the town board, that's my opinion.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I would, the comments that I would have would just be to, you know, keep it as natural and looking as possible. I mean, it's, otherwise it's gonna look like, you know, a scene from Mad Max over there. So, you know, keep it natural. I know there is some tree covering over there. And, you know, try to disguise it to the best that they can. I mean, it's, it's an unfortunate thing to have to run right down Pines Bridge Road. You know, considering the amount of land they have there. But I do recognize the, the angles and, and topography and sun, whatnot there. But yeah, I mean, screening, I'm not sure what kind of fence they're gonna put there. Certainly wouldn't, wouldn't wanna be living across the street from that. But, yeah, those are, those would be my comments.
Got it, thank you.
So if we said that we don't have objection to the application of the floating zone as described in the notice, but we, we do note that there is some vegetation there, we would like the applicant to make an effort to maintain the existing vegetation, perhaps put in supplementary vegetation and/or fencing as needed to, to preserve the view shed. Something like that? If I made a motion that said all that?
And I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Got it, thank you.
You got that right, Nicole.
Yes.
Okay, that was our last item. I'd like to say happy Thanksgiving, everybody, as we.
Next meeting.
That, that will happen before we're done. And our next meeting is on Wednesday, December 17th, 2025, as opposed to our. And.
This is January.
Yes. So do I have a, I'll, I'll move that we adjourn until December 17th? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody.